All right, Commissioners, we are adjourned for our 6 o'clock public hearing. Mr. County Administrator, what is our item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 20, Commissioners, your first and only public hearing to consider ordinance regarding the use of speed detection devices in school zones.
Mr. Chair, move staff recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. We do have two speakers on this side.
Okay. Yes. What's our first speaker?
First speaker, joining us virtually, Richard Salab.
Mr. Saliba, are you there? Mr. Saliba, are you there? Okay, what's our next speaker, Mr. Administrator?
Next speaker, David Derby.
David?
I'm sorry, yes, I am here, if you can hear me.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Derby, hold on one second. Mr. Saliba, how do you say your last name?
Um, S-A-L-I-B-A, Saliba, sir.
Saliba.
Richard Saliba.
Saliba. Okay. Sorry.
Close enough.
No worries.
Thank you.
You have, can you say your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes.
Richard Saliba, 7104 Summer Ridge Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32312.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I wish to address this issue. I'm an attorney, I've been practicing for nearly half a century, I'm a member of Florida, Pennsylvania, California bar, and I state this only to emphasize that I have focused on the statute and I am certain from my perspective analysis it's unconstitutional. That's not the venue, this is not proper for this venue. If this august body decides to implement this, I'm intimately familiar with it, I've attended the hearings, I've dealt with the city on this, I have one major concern. The Tallahassee Democrat indicated that the program netted $435,600 from March 28th to June 30th. I am going to speculate and respectfully submit to you that the reason for that is because the city turns off the yellow flashing light. That major yellow flashing light, which is across Cary Forest Road, for example, alerts citizens to slow down because this is a speeds school zone. When that light is turned off, after the children are at school, there's no other children on the street, the city still tickets individuals, and that's where I would speculate the major sources it comes coming from. I believe that's unfair, and if we're interested in the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, should we not keep that flashing light on during the time period when the camera is being used? So, from a practical perspective, for safety purposes, the citizens should be provided due process that the cameras are being used and that the light is in effect, the flashing light, so they can slow down. Otherwise, they're not aware. Logically, if I'm an individual driving a car and I see the flashing light, I will slow down. But once that flashing lights turn off, I can come upon the inescapable conclusion that the speed limit's no longer in effect. And that's where the citizens are being ticketed, and I would speculate at least 95 to 98% of the tickets are emanating from the time period when the flashing light is not operative. So, I have 11 other reasons why, I only have, I guess, 30 seconds, so I can't go into the other reasons dealing with constitutional issues, and I won't. But the main concern I have is that the citizens of this county be provided fundamental fairness and proper notice, and I believe the way it's now implemented and incorporated into the system by the city of Tallahassee is unfair and doesn't provide due process to the citizens traversing that roadway. Thank you very much, I appreciate your entertaining my position.
Thank you, Mr. Saliba. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker on this item, David Derby.
Mr. Derby, if you could, Derby?
I'm sorry, Derby.
Derby, D-E-R.
There's a difference.
Derby.
Do I come here?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes, could you just state your name and address for the record?
My name is David Derby, 5608 Nature Lane.
Thank you.
Tallahassee, Leon County. This guy's a tough guy to follow up on. He really did it eloquently, which I'll not be able to do. I made a few notes here, but in all, you need to be fair to your citizens and along with the enforcement. Education in the city, I think, is very lacking, especially of the elegant points he made out about doing it when the lights are not on. That's cheating. I mean, the city never fixed this, is this what I'm hearing? They don't flash the lights when they're doing their school zone enforcement? How do you guys feel about that?
We don't answer questions, Mr. ...
I know, I know, I'm asking in a form of a question. How do y'all feel about that? You know? Now, in the middle of the night, when the speed zone they're gonna enforce, 15 or 30 if it's a 30 zone, and they're gonna be giving out tickets in the middle of the night? 24-hour enforcement, is that what we're looking at? I guess we are. So, it's all about generating revenue to make it look attractive to y'all, not protecting the kids. I'm all about the kids, but I haven't heard of too many accidents during school, out in front of the schools. And I'm not, I don't want to say I'm minimizing the safety of children, but it seems like we're creating more problems for ourselves than we're solving sometimes. And I know this is a very particular subject, I've been a lot of work in schools, understand the importance of our children. They're everything to us. The signing is very lacking, we need to be sure we're educating our Leon County constituents better than the city is educating their people. Are there other citations being written besides speeding? I heard of one piece of junk where somebody was getting ticketed for a seatbelt violation in the school zone. They went back around to see what was going on, they got another ticket at the same time, because went through the zone again to see what was going on. They were doing the speed limit, they couldn't understand what was going on. That needs to be put out there, what are they gonna do? And the light issues, I mean, exactly, exactly what he said, and more elegant than I am. So, we need to put out a lot more education to ourselves, and we need to be careful about what we task ourselves, what we put on ourselves, because it's like the red light issue that we had that, thank goodness, went away. It was a disaster because you're having rear-end accident. So, thank you for your time, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. Any further speakers? All right, Commissioners, just before we get into discussion on this, we had a motion from Commissioner Maddox, was there a second? Second Commissioner O'Keefe. Excuse me, just for my clarification, excuse me, Madam County Attorney, I guess you can speak to this. It's my understanding to our speakers' points, and I drive through one of these every day on Cary Forest Parkway, which has been the most prolific ticketer, there's a sign, very clearly indicates the timeframe for when the ticketing is being done automated. It's like 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There's a sign that says photo enforcement, 7:30 to 3:30. It is really not that confusing, it is not happening at midnight, it's not happening after, between 7:30 and 3:30, it doesn't happen. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, so, the statute outlines the periods of time that this can be enforced, and there are four distinct categories. 30 minutes before through 30 minutes after the start of a breakfast program at a school, 30 minutes before through 30 minutes after the start of the school day, for the entire school day, and then 30 minutes before through 30 minutes after the end of the school day. So, there would not be any enforcement in the middle of the night that's not permitted under the statute. In terms of signage, the statute also provides options. It says permanent signs designating school zones and school zone speed limits shall be uniform in size and color, and shall have the times during which the restrictive speed limit is enforced clearly designated thereon. There is another option, which is flashing beacons activated by a time clock or other automatic device, or manually activated may be used as an alternative to posting the times during which the restrictive school speed limit is enforced. So, there are options in terms of signage.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And so, again, my understanding is, there's signage that indicates when it can be enforced. I also understand that the city's program on Cary Forest Parkway dropped drastically after the first month because people adjusted their behavior. When the light is flashing, the speed limit changes, and it's still giving you an 11 mile an hour grace period, so if the light is flashing and children are present, it's 15 miles an hour, you'd have to go in 26 in that environment to get a ticket. And on the normal Cary Forest Parkway, it's 35 miles an hour or 30 miles an hour, you'd have to be going 41 to get a ticket when the light is not flashing. And that's only between 7:30 and 3:30. So, this program, and y'all probably know this, but for the speakers, is outlined in Florida statute. This is approved by the Florida Legislature, this is being employed all over the state of Florida, I would assume, and it is, I think, I'm pretty sure it's past constitutional muster, it's not like a red light program, and it is about safety in our school zones where children are present in all of the hours of that timeframe, but certainly when the light is flashing. And so, and the city already has this employed in the city's area, we're talking about doing this in like a handful of county school zones, so the vast majority of it is still in the city and has been active now for a few months, I think. So, just wanted to frame that discussion, Commissioners and for the public listening. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're first in the queue, followed by Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, I'd like to ask if, since we jumped past the county administrator kind of laying it out, would the county administrator like to share any sort of briefing that might address some of these concerns that he would have had before?
Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner. Now, I think the one that I was going to point out was what the chairman just articulated in terms of the violations would only be in effect for speeds over 10 miles an hour. And of course, there's also a pretty extensive placement, installation, operation, format that's all governed by statute, as well as a due process that is in place for appealing tickets and challenging violations, that sort of thing. So, again, just happy to answer any questions that you might have. Of course, this is not a, this is a revenue neutral, we view this as a revenue neutral program. It's really the dollars that we would collect on our percentages would be sufficient to cover our expenses related to the program. So, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. The, I support this, and I'm glad we're doing it. I think it's important to note that, separate from whatever the city's program does, the county, we have a plan, a communication plan, we're making it clear so this doesn't surprise people, and the, it is important to note that no matter what time of it is, whether it's the normal speed limit or the school zone speed limit during the day, when the school zone speed limit light is flashing, you have to be going over 10 miles an hour above the speed limit. And this is, and so I think this is a reasonable thing. One of the main things I hear from neighbors in our office for constituent requests is on speeding through their neighborhoods and trying to get control of that, and what we often are into is, the sheriff's officer, the police department only have so much available resources to enforce the speed limit, at least as much concern for people's neighborhood streets should be given to streets in front of schools. And I think that 10 miles and over in a school zone is a pretty large grace period, a pretty large grace zone. And so, that's why I'm supporting this, and it finds a way to help improve the safety of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Attorney, you said 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after the start of school, what was the other one? I know, and the end of school.
Yeah, so, and it's kind of like à la carte, local governments can select the timeframes they want it to enforce, but the maximum that you could possibly have it in a given school day is 30 minutes before a breakfast program and 30 minutes after the end of the school day. That is, in its entirety, if you were to opt in for every single possible time that you could apply it, the maximum timeframe in a day that it could be enforced.
So, just, the signs say, I have to take my son to his school, I have to pass Griffin. The sign says it will be enforced, I think it was like 8:30 to 4:20. The assumption is that those cameras are going from 8:30 all the way to 4:20. Just from my understanding, what you're telling me is that it could be from, I think, school starts at 9:30, the breakfast program probably starts at 8, something like that. So, it's 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after, and then at the end of the day, it's 30 minutes, the school day, it's 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after.
Yeah, some breakfast programs at schools start earlier than the school day. So, for those schools that have those breakfast programs, they have the option to make it 30 minutes before those breakfast programs start, and then they can do it 30 minutes after, they can do it 30 minutes before the start of school, 30 minutes after the start of school, they can do it the entire school day, and then they can do it up until 30 minutes before and after the end of the school day.
Got it, so they can do the entire school?
They can do absolutely the entire, if they choose to do so, that's correct.
So, I do have the question of, how do you know? Like, does the city enforce the entire school day? Or are they doing it 30 minutes before the 30?
They have the signs.
Huh?
They put up the signs.
The signs have to tell you the times that it's being enforced.
They're doing the 30 minutes.
It's very specific, it's required.
But, in all schools are doing the 30 minutes?
Yes, all the schools where they're doing it, they're doing 30 minutes.
So, that's the part, that's the point I'm making. Those signs say from 8:30 to 4:20, to me, that's the entire school day.
Well, that's actually less than the entire school day.
Well...
They're doing 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after. They're encompassing the whole school day, but they're doing 30 minutes before breakfast.
Understand me though, for someone, now that we know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, we know, but if I'm in, if I'm in this gentleman in the general public, I see that sign and it says 8:30 to 4:20, so even if that light's not flashing between 8:30 and 4:20, I'm expecting that if I'm going, now I know 10 miles over, I'm going 10 miles over, I'm gonna get ticketed. What you're telling me, Mr. Chair, is that it's actually 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after, and at the end of the day, 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after. I'm not, I think this is, this is good. I would like for us, as we go down this road, to be very clear, even with the signage, to be very clear with our county constituents what times we're enforcing, the speed limits that you have to go to be, to be ticketed, and so, so even if the light's not on, I know that if I'm, let's say I'm going through at 1:30, there's nothing, that's not 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after, it's 1:30. If I go 26 miles an hour and I'm going through at 1:30, I'm probably not gonna get ticketed because that's not before, after, right?
No, that is during the school day.
So, it's the entire school day.
Beginning and end.
If the jurisdiction opts to do so, it can be, it can go the entire day from 30 minutes before the beginning of a breakfast program at a school until 30 minutes after the end of school.
Ah, I see what you're saying. All I'm saying is, now I'm clear. I just want us to be clear.
The only thing that changes is the speed limit during the day.
Okay.
And that, you know, again, if you post a sign, the only difference is, the speed limit changes when the light's flashing. But if the light's flashing, you gotta be going 26 to bust the speed, and you're cooking at 26 in a light flashing school zone.
The speed limit changes if the light flashes.
Right.
If the light is not on, what's the speed limit?
Whatever it is on the road, 30, 40 miles an hour, whatever. But if you go 50 or 41, you're gonna get an electronic ticket.
Oh, I get it now. It's so simple. Okay, so, if the speed limit, if it's flashing, it's 15 miles an hour. If the road, mouth fire is 30 miles per hour when it's not flashing, if you go 41, you're gonna get a ticket.
For instance, I'll give you a great scenario where this is gonna really change some behavior. I go to Charles High School every morning, I'm going northbound, like I'm going to Thomasville, Georgia. Most of the traffic is coming southbound out of Thomasville, Georgia, and that is a 45 mile an hour speed limit under normal circumstances.
Yes, sir.
I worked with Representative Tant to have a school zone placed there two years ago, or a year ago, and that speed limit is now 20 or 25 miles an hour in front of the school between 7 a.m. and, you know, I don't know, 7:45 a.m., whatever the school zone times are, and the light is flashing.
Yes, sir.
So, those people coming down southbound from Thomasville, who are going from 65 to 55 to 45, now to 25.
Right.
If they're going 36, they're gonna get a ticket, and that's gonna be a lot of tickets, and then those people will slow down.
So, that's my original thing. Now, I understand it, but you see how much it took for me to understand?
I know, we gotta be clear with our people.
So, my point is, if we could do a media campaign in front of this, I don't know if the city of Tallahassee did it, I don't, I don't think they did, I don't remember seeing one. But to educate our folks, like the two gentlemen that spoke, this is the way this works, then we won't, we won't get these kind of, these kind of folks coming up and saying, we don't think it's a good idea, because it's actually a great idea. It's just, tell me the rules of the game before I start playing with you, you know what I'm saying? So, I would think I would ask is, as we roll this RFP out, that staff come back with a media campaign about how we're gonna go about educating the public as to how this actually works. Now, after we do that, if folks do what they do, then that's on them, but I don't want, I don't want people to go through these zones not knowing the rules, and then they get a whole bunch of tickets because they didn't know what was going on. I think, to me, I think that's cheating a little bit. So, I look forward to supporting the item, I just want that media campaign too. Does that need to be part of the motion?
No, we've included it in the analysis, the state law provides at least a 30-day media campaign, and we would, you know, we would do more than that.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner County Administrator, will we do the same thing the city did and have a grace period of 30 days of like warnings before we start ticketing?
That's what we would anticipate.
Perfect. So, there'll be a grace period. All right, yes, sir. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I won't be supporting this measure. Mr. Derby's comments to us were quite compelling. Attorney Silver's comments to us was quite compelling. I've seen in the news that these detection devices have been challenged in courts in Florida, and they've found that calibration of the detection devices have not always been, no pun intended, up to speed. Nevertheless, I believe that they've been, I don't know if suspended, but upended, whatever, but this has not been successful. But more than anything, as I look at the schools that would be impacted, I have one school among the eight, and that's Woodville, K through 8. And actually, Woodville is on a road called Woodville Highway, and it's been there for ever, and the people coming that direction every day, every day, on a road called Highway. I don't know why you put a school on a highway, but that's other pay grades beyond mine that put this on the highway. But my district just can't afford a $100 hit, a blindside hit, something mailed to them. Officers don't even pull you over, you don't get an immediate understanding. People not gonna understand, why am I getting mailed this from Commissioner Caban? Why is Caban doing this to us? Why is Commissioner Maddox doing this to us? We got blindsided. I mean, I know that ICE has changed the dynamics of expectations for, you know, do you need a court, do you need a court free clearance to go search somebody's house or do something? I realize that the Sixth Amendment is almost dead, but this is one of those phantom gotcha kind of things. And I'm speaking for solely as a District 1 County Commissioner, the people in my area, and a part of it is 32304, they can't take blindsided hits. There have been no instances of children getting run over, killed, no animals have gotten killed and run over to my awareness at Woodville High. So evidently, the people are well-trained, and I would trust law enforcement to actively do what Officer Friendly and Leon County Sheriff have done for years in Woodville, and that's continue to protect the children. But you all may not have been going into our grocery stores lately. Revels, since we've last met, gone out of business. Woodville Grocery Store, gone out of business. The people who provide the food can't afford to provide it, and the people who are trying to purchase it are even in worse shape. I think that in this economic era, as well as the falling away of protections of which American citizens are not used to being blindsided by some phantom, something that they don't remember, is just wrong, and this is not the right time. And I'm urging you all to consider the timing, the absence of, Mr. Silver said, due process, the absence of people getting the right to confront, to speak to the officer in real time, because once you get that ticket, five days, four days, seven days later, you done had three headaches, all kind of stress, been to the grocery store, people are hurting, and my people cannot take a blindsided $100 ticket for something that they will not recall and may not respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings, followed by Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And looking at the ordinance, and of course, I'm concerned about due process as well, it clearly indicates that dilators can request a hearing. The ordinance also says that the rules of evidence will not apply. So, I'm concerned with whether or not the standards will be set out someplace for, for the hearing officer to overcome a presumption of a violation. And I don't know, it might be a question for the county attorney, but will there be criteria set out for the hearing officer to abide by, to make a determination? Will the hearing officer have discretion in determining whether you violated or whether you didn't? Does that picture and that notice sent to you, is that a prima facie case of a violation? If I can ask Madam Attorney. Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, as proposed, law enforcement would have to review, and it has to be photographic evidence establishing the vehicle, that, the vehicle, the vehicle of the person who committed the infraction. So, law enforcement will have to validate that a violation occurred, okay? What will happen at that point is, and that's before the notice ever gets sent out, all right? So, if law enforcement looks at it, can't or doesn't violate, validate that a violation occurred, no notice gets sent. Once notice gets sent, person has an opportunity to appeal it. That's when it would go to the special magistrate. That's when it would go to the special magistrate. And in that case, it would be like any other instance where an alleged violation of a county ordinance has occurred. The person will show up, they'll explain, hey, it wasn't me, it was some, you know, whatever their explanation is, the law enforcement officer, again, will have to validate that they looked at it and that a violation occurred, and they will have to do that based on photographic evidence. In that instance, as in any instance, the special magistrate will weigh the evidence and make a determination, just like in any other litigation proceeding.
Okay, thank you, Madam Attorney. So will, will there be further, I guess, indication in the ordinance that indicates that the hearing officer has discretion? Will that specifically say that the hearing officer has discretion in finding a violation or not?
If the board wants it in there, yes, but I mean, it is understood that the, otherwise, there would be no need for the hearing officer. I mean, it would just be automatic.
Okay, I understand, but I think it's important, if we're going to give the hearing officer discretion, I think it's important that that's specifically stated in the ordinance. Otherwise, when it gets to the hearing officer, and law enforcement has reviewed it, and it's been under this secondary review, I think there's gonna be an assumption that that's a prima facie case of violation, and it's nothing they can do. And appealing to the hearing officer is just gonna end up being just a case of, you know, futility. If we don't, if it's not specifically set out saying that the hearing officer has discretion.
If that's the will of the board, that can be added to the ordinance. That's, it's not a problem.
Oh, okay.
To add it, yeah.
Okay.
To make it express.
Does that, do we need a motion to say that, or?
Yeah, I think you could maybe ask for an amendment.
An amendment to, to the motion. You're okay with that?
Can you restate it? I don't understand prima facie.
Well, no, that, that the ordinance specifically says that the hearing officer has discretion.
Has discretion to, okay.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
In determining whether or not a violation has occurred.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I was the second, state that one more time, very clear for me, like I'm five.
The hearing officer has discretion in determining whether or not a violation has occurred.
Yes.
Is it, is it an amendment to that?
Okay. And then the other thing, Mr. Chair, and...
Sorry.
That's okay, I wanted to wait. My other concern is, at what stage during the violation, is the public put on notice that this violation is subject to being sent to the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle, and it could, could affect the status of your driving record, your insurance? And I'm not saying say all of that, but I think there should be some notice if this is subject to being sent to DA, Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle, the public needs to be aware of that.
Madam Attorney.
So my question is, is it subject to being sent to Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle as a violation, as a moving violation?
Right, so it goes through our administrative process, it's not sent to DHSMV.
It's not what, I'm sorry?
It is not sent to DHSMV.
Highway Safety.
Highway, Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle.
Is it ever, is it ever subject to being sent to Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle?
Why don't you go to the, Charles or Kyle can continue.
Good evening, Commissioners. My understanding is that if they pay the fines of $100, no problem, but if after the violator received the notice of violation, they do not respond, after 30 days, the law enforcement will issue the citation. In such case, I think the citation will go to the Department of Motor Vehicles, Highway Safety.
Right.
Right, and so for clarification, if they don't pay and they don't appeal, that's when it would go to Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle?
Okay, so I believe from a due process standpoint and a notice standpoint, the ordinance needs to make that distinction, distinction so that the citizens will know. And they'll know the, you know, that their actions are not, is gonna subject that violation to be sent to Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle, which can definitely affect your insurance, your driving record, et cetera. So if that can be another amendment, or in addition to the motion, that the ordinance clearly puts on notice to public that it could be, you know, sent.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Madam Attorney, does the, does the notice of violation not say plainly that if you do not pay this or appeal this, that it will be forwarded to the Division of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles and affect your insurance? I would assume that a notice of violation would have that in writing on it when it comes to you in the mail.
We are still in the pre-implementation phase. The board has to adopt the ordinance before staff really moves forward with anything related to implementation, but certainly that the notice itself would have to provide the notice of appeal, it would need to provide information about what happens if you don't pay and you don't appeal, all of that would be, but it wouldn't be a problem to make that express in the ordinance, there wouldn't be a problem to add that language.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So you're okay with adding that to, to the audience? Okay.
So we got adding that to the amendment?
As an amendment.
Okay.
Up to the motion, I'm sorry.
Seconder? Okay. Madam Attorney?
This, I've just got a couple of notes here. Will the, will the audience, Madam Attorney, if it's okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Put the public on notice of their responsibility, of what their, what the criteria is for them to go before the hearing officer and overcome the presumption of a violation.
The notice will provide for the process. It will be up to the person who allegedly violated to try to establish that in fact no violation occurred, just like with any other moving citation.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying, will the audience, will the ordinance that will come back to us set forth what the burden is for the citizen that has been accused of violating the ordinance? What their burden is and what they have to establish to overcome the presumption that they violated?
There's, there's no presumption per se. If, if, if they're saying, if, if a notice is issued, they want to assert that they didn't violate, and they ask for the hearing, they will literally just come to the hearing, they will explain how they didn't violate, that will be their position. The law enforcement officer will have to appear and produce all the evidence they have that, yes, in fact, a violation occurred. And then, to your point about what is expressly gonna go in this ordinance, the hearing officer then will make it his or her own determination about, they will weigh the evidence, as hearing officers do, and make that determination.
Okay, so the ordinance won't say by clear and convincing evidence, presumption of the evidence, or anything like that, as for, as the burden on me as a driver that's been accused of violating the ordinance, to overcome the burden that, that I did violate the ordinance. It's just up to the hearing officer to accept what I present at the hearing.
And weigh the evidence that's presented by both sides, both parties.
Okay, and then under the ordinance, it also says that once you appeal to the hearing officer, if you're not satisfied, then you can appeal to the circuit court, right?
That's correct, that's another layer of due process.
Okay, and then I take it that when you get to the circuit court level, then the rules of evidence will apply, even though the ordinance says the rules of evidence will not apply, but that's just before the hearing officer, am I correct?
That's correct, the rules, the rules of civil procedure would apply in the circuit court, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I, I recommend also that in the ordinance, in the section that says if you're not, you know, satisfied, and you go up to the circuit court level, that we specifically say that the rules of evidence will apply, because in the other section, we're saying that the rules of evidence will not apply. And I think it needs to be a distinction between those two levels of appeal. Mr., make up a motion.
Another, that's the third amendment.
Do you have a problem with that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Mr. O'Keefe? You still hanging in there on the second? I think these are just procedural things.
Yeah, I'm still in there, but I have comments when it's my turn.
Okay, we are, we have a motion with three amendments. Hold on, we got you in the queue, Mr. Proctor.
Oh, good, good, good.
Commissioner Caban, then Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, let me say that I support this ordinance. A large reason why, if you look at the graph on the agenda item, Woodville K through eight, which resides on Woodville Highway and Natural Bridge Road intersection, has over 1,700 violations going 10 miles per hour. And when you look at the surrounding area of the unincorporated, I mean, it, it has more quadrupled, if not, you know, 5X majority of the other violations. And so I think this fits into specifically our office's brand about wanting to improve public safety around school zones. I know the sentiment around this board, that we've talked about wanting to improve public safety around school zones as well. And I also want to say that I do think that this further voices the need for a traffic light, Mr. County Administrator, and I know we have that in motion, but at that intersection, just for the significant increase in speeding violations. However, I do share a little bit of this same sentiment as Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Cummings in regards to noticing the public. It's natural that, I believe, we can put out a big media campaign educating folks on this, however, it's natural that not every resident or every violator will see this. And so my question is, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Chair, if I may, how many, how many warnings will violator get before they're ticketed?
I think it's just a timeframe.
Will there be any warnings?
It's a 30-day window.
Yeah, it's just a window, it's just a time window, it's not an amount of warnings, it's just a period of time. No, Commissioners, I would like potentially to see, you know, where a first-time violation, they get a warning notice mailed to them. It's a first-time violation, it's that way, if you are a violator and you didn't know that this is, whether you see the sign or not, this is new, first time, hey, here's a warning in the mail. And then the second time, you know, they get, they get ticketed. I think it's, I think it's fair, you know, I, I think it's good governance, in my opinion. And if it's the board's will, Commissioner Cummings, would you be, we'd make it, okay, Commissioner Maddox, you'll accept that?
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, is the secondor okay with that amendment to, I mean, personally, I don't like that amendment, because you have a 30-day period in which, these are local traffic going through school zones, these are people that live around there, they're going through there every day. If they're doing this regularly, they're gonna get a warning in that 30-day period. So that would be my take on that.
If I, if I may?
Sure.
Some of these are state highways, you know, how I look at it, not everybody, you know, we have elderly folks in our, in our community who, they are not gonna be, in my opinion, as informed as some, as far as this campaign, some folks don't leave their house very often, and I just don't, you know, $100 is a significant fine, yes, they are speeding. I just like the personal notice saying that, hey, this is, this is what you, you know, just, you look at, if you get pulled over by a police officer, he has the discretion to give you a warning. And so I like the heads-up on it, or we notice the public and we send, okay, here's mail, this, we're enforcing this. I, I just, I really believe we need to educate folks on this. You know, I don't, if it's the board's will, I just think it's, it's really important that we do so.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you seem like...
I do not accept that.
Okay, so we now need a second. Here's, listen, I will second the motion. I, I hear what you're saying. It didn't occur to me that there might be elderly people who don't travel through a school zone but once every 60 days or something. So that does make sense, I apologize, you changed my mind on that just that quickly, honestly. So, I mean, I, I would be comfortable either extending the warning period to 60 days, or if you just wanna just have a blanket policy of the first one is a warning. I mean, it's kinda six one, half a dozen the other, but that is a good point. I mean, there are people who don't leave, and if you're coming from, that's a good point. We need a point, okay, okay. Commissioner Cummings now has the second, so we're still back on the motion with all these amendments and stuff. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Administrator or Madam Attorney, I had some clarification for us.
Sorry, I just, in response to the last item about the rules of evidence applying at the circuit level, that will be the circuit court acting in its appellate capacity, so it won't be about rules of evidence, it will be about the rules of appellate procedure. That's what will apply at the circuit level, because it will be second-level appellate review by the circuit court. I just wanted to clarify that. It's not gonna be a complete retrial. The circuit court will be limited like the district court usually is.
Okay, Mr. Administrator?
Just very quickly, and again, well, obviously, whatever the board's direction might be, but in just tracking the discussion, it may be, we're gonna be evaluating in the RFP process, all the different technology, whether you can automate that first warning or not is a question I have, but it's something that we can evaluate. I know we can do the 60-day grace period, that wouldn't be as difficult. But again, that automation process is something, we have, you have different vendors utilizing different technology, and then we have different administrative functions, or is it just guidance we forward to the, to the hearing officer relative to that? But again, we can evaluate all that, and when we bring the RFPs back to you, the results of the RFPs, we can have some information on that and answer those questions for you as well. What's the best way to do that?
Yep, so you can take the ordinance with the amendments we asked for, but then it'll just come back in the RFP.
If that's the direction of the board, yes.
Sure. Okay, Commissioner Proctor, you've been waiting patiently, followed by Commissioner O'Keefe, and then Commissioner Cummings, are you still in the queue again? Okay, so Proctor, O'Keefe, and Cummings.
Commissioners, I'm asking you all, let's stand down on this, let's not impose, is this a criminal or civil matter?
Civil.
Civil, okay. Let's not impose legal hardships that don't exist prior to tonight. I'm asking you, please understand that, though the Sixth Amendment applies to criminal cases, but yet, in the spirit and in the interest of Americans, jurisprudence, people expect to be able to confront witnesses, they expect to be able to cross-examine witnesses, and I'm telling you all that whoever the camera is, you won't be able to question the camera, you won't be able to cross-examine the operator of the camera, these elements. And we're placing the people of Leon County up against AI, artificial intelligence, and automation, and the question is, how many speeding tickets of officers brought downstairs to courtroom, and citizens said, I was not going there? But how many times does the automated speed gun win today? We're in a period where your mama, your daddy is, don't have the same weight as AI. And when AI speaks, the court rolls with it, the people get... weight as AI. And when AI speaks, the court rolls with it, the people get rolled over, y'all don't do this to these poor people. Now, hell, y'all might represent folk that a hundred dollars don't hurt them. I mean, if they had a hundred dollars, they'd give a hundred dollars to the American Cancer Society. And we sitting up here wearing pink ties and stuff tonight, but ain't none of us gave the Cancer Society a dollar that I know of. I didn't. And then we're going to ask a hundred dollars, but sixty of it to go to the county. And you see the walkthrough, everybody, I didn't even see the school board's recommendation to us. I saw nothing that the school board wrote. And I believe that we can sit up here and be all haughty-taughty and all public and da-da-da. But the truth is, everybody's going to hurt from this right here. And ain't nobody got killed last year, year before, and all of that. And of course, if you're one of the greatest carnage in our schools, it happens behind the doors of the school building. That's where the carnage lies. And what happens to the minds, to the wheels of hearts and souls, why don't we go do something about that part of the number of children who get thrown out of school for minor offenses? And the gravity of punishment for students behind them doors is totally different. If we want to be big heroes, let's go do something behind the doors of school and not the poor people who are traveling to and for. And I intentionally trying to drive pass and all like that. And I think there's a verse that covers this, for all have fallen short of glory of God. And we've all sinned. And we've even fallen short of the glory of God. And for sure, we may fall short of the glory of an automatic speed detection. And I think that we're going too far in over-legalizing something which we don't have data to say that there have been carnage of human life on the streets due to speeding. And I would also suggest that what we're setting up our citizens is for their license to be suspended. If they fail, county attorney, if there's a failure to pay, then they get reported to, I guess, DMV. And DMV ain't nothing to play with. You get your license suspended, you're going to get insurance issues, and this hundred dollars becomes a permanent fixture of an increase on people's insurance. And it says that if people do not pay, do not pay their, and don't appeal, if they don't pay and they don't appeal, the county attorney says it goes to highway safety. And stuff like this that goes to highway safety, it ends up in a suspended license. And a suspended license can lead to an increase in insurance. And I'm begging on bended knee, don't do this to the people District One. They ain't criminals, civil, if you will, transgressors. Let's not create new rules that create a whole lot of folk. I mean, sixty dollars. I'd rather go up on the county's fire fees and let the city go up thirty-two percent than to do what we about to do to people and what we're about to paralyze their lives. We don't have to do this. Just because we have the power to do it, can we not also have the control to contain, to restrict, to restrict the power that we have? Not all power has to be exercised. And right now, there's nothing positive because people, I think the two elements that I heard, a county attorney said, if they don't pay and don't appeal, with them the two criteria, they're going to end them up suspended license at DMV, is a whole heap of people that vote for me, that they're not going to pay because, first of all, they don't even understand what this phantom ticket is. And they're not going to appeal because it's not a part of what they do. And where do you go? Do you come to the courthouse? Do you hire an attorney? What are the next steps? County court, is it the circuit court appellate? It's too confusing. We should not project these kinds of new legal layers into the lives of citizens who, before you act on this, they don't have these problems, these headaches. There's enough confusing folk. I'm begging y'all, don't do this. We powerful. We don't have to flex muscle on folk that's subject to forget and not remember. There's got to be some other ways. Let's get in a fight with the city and have a big dog fight the city. Let's fight people our own size. But we about to f with the wrong folk. It's not, we here to help the folk, not create problems for them. Don't support, just turn this down. The state of Florida has issues all across it with them yellow dog cameras on those school buses. They, I think, haven't they been overruled, Madam Attorney, having the school bus cameras have been largely shut down because they don't work?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I'm not aware. I don't know.
Somebody Google the yellow dog and see if the school bus cameras have been shut down. But they're problematic. It's occurring certainly in the city of Tampa. There have been lawsuits all over the place that those school buses that take pictures ain't worth it. And I'm telling you, we should not subject and create a superior legal power that's automated, that's AI-based, AI-driven over the people of Leon County. Please don't do that. Vote it down. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner O'Keefe, followed by Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Minor, and then we need to vote.
Mr. Chair, is AI part of the enforcement process on anything being bid?
No.
Okay. And...
It uses radar and lidar.
Okay.
Or indoor, depending on the...
And would a human make the decision?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I, what is apparent to me is very interesting. The observation I make is we are talking about a new enforcement of an existing speed limit. We are not adding new laws that change the speed limit. If you get pulled over for speeding now, you get a ticket, you probably get points on your license. If you get a ticket in the mail from this and you pay it, you don't get points on your license. Is that accurate? Okay. A year ago or so, we were considering an ordinance on, we called it anti-soliciting or safety in the roadway, but it was triggered by panhandling. I did not hear any of this due process discussion where we spent thirty minutes worrying about people who would be subject to this new enforcement. But now that we're talking about drivers and not pedestrians or people outside of cars, we want to make sure that the Supreme Court's instructions on how to fight a traffic ticket are going in the mail. It is frustrating because what I hear is the message that when we want to enforce an existing speed limit in a school zone, we are more concerned with making sure drivers don't have to pay a speeding ticket over safety of pedestrians. We haven't had a discussion about due process of pedestrians being injured. And so it just, it strikes me that we are pre-defending a different population of people who happen to have cars and drive, who are responsible, just like you and me, for knowing and obeying laws and speed limits. We are driving three, four, five, six thousand pound cars. We are responsible drivers. We are not changing the speed limit. We are not changing what the rules of the road are. But when we were changing the rules for people asking for money in the streets who don't have cars, we weren't worried about all this. And so I'm going to support, I support the program. I don't think we need to give automatic warnings for people whose warning was taking the driving test, whose warning is all the notice we're giving, and whose warning is the speed limit signs. We're not talking about one mile an hour over. We're talking about school zones, eleven miles an hour over. And I will support the motion only because it seems to be the only motion that gets us the program. But it frustrates me that I don't see this kind of due process concern to all citizens concerned when it's not a speeding ticket.
All right, Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Minor, and we'll go to a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that this particular ordinance would be effective during certain portions of the school day when the lights are flashing. No?
The entire school day, thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after, it's enforced. The speed limit changes when the lights flash. But that's only when kids are present in the morning time.
Okay.
But it's going to be enforced from seven-thirty in the morning to three-thirty, or depending on if you're a high school.
So in between, when the lights aren't flashing?
Still enforced, but it's at the higher speed.
But we should have visible signs that will say...
Photo enforced from seven-thirty to three-forty. That's what the signs will say.
And when the light's not flashing?
Seven-thirty to three-forty.
Okay, you're still subject.
When the lights flash and the speed limit changes.
Changes, okay.
That's it.
That is sort of, that is drastic.
I mean, if you just read the sign, you know, studies have shown, and I'm not the consultant for this or nothing, studies have shown that, you know, after the first month, these citations go down tremendously.
Tremendously, right.
Because people figure it out. Don't go eleven miles an hour over the speed limit in a school zone, period. You probably shouldn't go eleven miles over the speed limit ever, period. But this is going to enforce it on you. Commissioner O'Keefe's right. If a cop is sitting there, they could pull you over going five miles an hour over the speed limit. So it's just, it's a statutorily allowed way to slow people down in school.
Well, I needed that, and I appreciate that clarification because I go through several school zones every day.
Right.
Every day. But most of the time, the lights, you know, the lights are flashing. And I think it's important that the public knows. We have some clarification and we have, you know, the public is on notice. I think that we're all concerned about the safety of the children in the school zones. Children are more likely to be present during the school zone. So that's my paramount concern, even though Commissioner Proctor is very convincing. I certainly don't want to put more burden on the citizens, but I'm concerned about the safety of our children in these areas as well. So I'm going to support the motion with those additional concerns. And I think anytime that we can, as a body, as a policymaking body, place it in our ordinances, certain provisions to put the public on notice, I think it's incumbent upon us, you know, to do so. Whether they read the ordinance or not, I think it's our responsibility to make sure the public is on notice about the ramifications are not violating that particular ordinance. So I will be supporting the motion with the various amendments. Now, this will still come back to us as a full document for us to scrutinize, am I correct? No, Madam Attorney?
Well, the RFP will come back.
This is the public hearing to adopt the ordinance, but then if adopted, then the RFP will come back for the selection of the vendor and other things. But those are implementation.
Oh, okay. I understand. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cummings, also, I think your amendments accomplish what you want to accomplish. And I should, I think you're talking about in terms of process. But I also think it's important to clarify, it's not just pedestrians. There are major traffic accidents in front of Charles High School because kids are turning left in front of southbound traffic that's coming hot. So like, it's car accidents too in front of busy high schools. So just as a clarification, it's not just little kids walking across the street. It can be people in cars, yeah. So it just really is, it creates safety, frankly.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information.
Can I go to Commissioner Minor first, and then you can make a point, and we can close out?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. You know, this is actually, this discussion is one example of county commissioners having different viewpoints and expressing those viewpoints. And Commissioner Proctor, I disagree with you strongly on your position on this, but I respect your ability to represent your constituents in District One. I'm of the opinion, in my district, I look at it a lot differently than you do. I look at Canopy Oaks Elementary and at Old Bain Bridge and Perkins up near North Monroe. In the one day that was surveyed, a thousand drivers went above ten miles an hour over the school zone speed limit. That was already there, right?
Right.
My perspective is different because I feel like we are obligated to do something about that and for each of our schools in our districts. Because if, God forbid, if a child gets hit walking to Canopy Oaks Elementary and we didn't do something about that, I couldn't live with myself. And so the school zone speeds limits are already there. They're already there. This gives us the mechanism to encourage enforcement, to motivate people to obey the school zone speed limits that are already there. So I'm in favor of the motion as amended. I think this is going to be very helpful. As our chairman Welch has said, studies show that once the public campaign has been launched, once people are aware of it, once the, once the process is in play, you tend to see a dramatic decrease in the amount of people violating the school zone speed limit. That is going to save lives. So I'm very much in favor of the motion. I'm thankful that this is coming to us. And I respect the folks that disagree with me on this, but my sense of the people in my district would want this strongly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor, will you quickly wrap us up?
County attorney, what hindereth this body from lowering this fine from a hundred dollars to twenty-five dollars?
I believe, and I have the statute here, it actually sets the amount. It says twenty dollars must be remitted to the Department of Revenue for deposit into the General Revenue Fund. Sixty dollars must be retained by the county or municipality and must be used to administer speed detection systems in school zones and other public safety initiatives. Three dollars are remitted to the Department of Revenue for deposit into the Department of Law Enforcement Criminal Justice Standards and Training Trust Fund. Twelve dollars are remitted to the county school district for certain uses. Five dollars must be retained by the county or the municipality for the school crossing guard recruitment or retention program. It actually identifies the amount of money per ticket or citation and where it has to go. So there is no flexibility for the county to modify that amount.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioners, we have a motion with various amendments seconded by Commissioner Cummings, made by Commissioner Maddox. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Commissioner Proctor, you good?
I'll oppose.
Okay, so a pass of six one, Commissioner Proctor in opposition. Thank you, Commissioners. That completes our general business agenda. Do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agenda items, Mr. Administrator?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, we're on comment discussion items. Madam County Attorney, you're up.
I have nothing for the board. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Great job on this agenda, by the way, on your items. Mr. Administrator?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. Commissioner Proctor, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Commissioners, today, the president of Tallahassee Urban League, Ms. Curtis Taylor, visited with us to appeal to us, to support, to include a media campaign, of which the Urban League was working with conjunctively the sheriff as well as the county. My understanding, and I spoke with Sheriff McNeil last week, he was open to working with the Urban League as a civic organization, as well as with the county, which he's indicated some discussions would be forthcoming. The reason I went to Mr. Taylor last week, aware of his position over multiple months with respect to guns and this, this, and that, was after Publix announced that you could bring open carry into the public. And you need probably two carries, something in Publix, to get up out of there. But they said that you could come into Publix with open care. I think that's a dumb, dumb rule, crazy, cynical, nutty, all of those, and check the block three times on all of those words. I believe that open care is more dangerous than the school zones and blah, blah, blah. It's more people going to get hurt. Bad things are going to result from this. And my ask tonight is for, number one, that the county does engage and bring Urban League, who've been working in the urban area. who've been working in the urban area, who've been working in the areas and the trenches of kids and folk carrying guns, that we bring them in formally as a partner, uh, in the face of a tumultuous time on open carry. Um, I'd like to make that motion.
Can you clarify, Commissioner Proctor, what you're asking for? You want the county to work with the Urban League?
As the county is engaging, uh, a media campaign with the sheriff, that the Urban League is a partner, continuing what they've been doing with guns and Tallahassee Ford and all of that.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Minor, a second, that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes unanimously with Commissioner Cummings out of chambers.
Secondly, Commissioners, um, I would ask for media, uh, we need a media campaign to delineate where open carry, uh, is open and where it don't work. Uh, can you carry the guns to church? Publix said you could bring them in their place. Can you carry them to the club? Uh, can you carry them to Pop Bell's? What, yeah, we got some students killed, uh, last spring. Somebody had a gun on campus. But we need to have, uh, not just a campaign about driving fast through the school zone, but the public needs to know, since they can carry, where the line stops. And I'm asking for, uh, our staff's brilliance to, uh, foster a campaign. If there are areas that you can't go, can we please let the public know where guns are not, uh, accepted? I'll make that as a motion.
Madam Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, so what I would say is there's a true distinction between where it's permissible on government property, public property versus private property. And where things get really gray is on the private property side, private property owners get to decide. So when you're talking about a media campaign and informing the public, the line is gonna change depending on where you are and what that property owner allows in any specific circumstance. Now, on the public property side, there are certain sensitive areas where handguns and, and weapons are not allowed, but that is expressly enumerated in the statute where those locations are. Um, everywhere else is open for public property. I mean, that, that's, that's the line. I mean, I don't know what else to say about that, but, but I would be really cautious. The other thing that I think the board needs to be mindful of is, again, nothing about the court determining that that statute was unconstitutional and that now open carry is permitted allows people who are otherwise not allowed to own or possess a gun to have one to begin with. The same would go for weapons. If they don't have the mental capacity, and they, they've determined not to have mental capacity, if they have certain criminal offenses. I mean, there are certain circumstances, if there's been a court order, like if you're on pretrial release and a court has said you're not allowed to have weapons. But again, that's gonna be a very person-specific analysis that would be very hard to address in a media campaign to the pu, to the public generally because it's going to be very case-specific. I, I just wanted to frame that for the Commission.
Well, I, um, appreciate, uh, what you said, County Attorney. Uh, you and Commissioner Cummings, uh, y'all read most state statutes than anybody in this room and your staff. Uh, the rest of us, we don't, you know, spend the day reading state statutes like y'all. Uh, and I would say that the public reads even less. And when you use the word open carry, for those people whose minds may be weak, uh, foggy, uh, unclear, we got the fair, uh, swinging through Tallahassee. Uh, do you carry, open carry and just get up on top of the Ferris wheel and just nut up? I mean, it's got to be someplace that if the state statutes have demarcated where guns don't go, we ought to be able to amplify that. Because to say open carry, uh, without any qualifications such as you're a felon, you're this, you're that, you know, no, people don't really know. They don't, you can't assume they know. So I'm asking for us, uh, we need to work with our sheriff. Uh, we need to let folk know that it just ain't no wide-opened Wild Wild West. You all would be surprised how words, people just take it as open carry. And the folk who you don't want to be enthusiastic about it, more excited than others. So speaking of what we can't do, and if someone got killed in a, in a school zone, it would hurt me as much that somebody got killed because we did not alert folk. Uh, they, they, they stand at risk of becoming criminals if they went to the wrong place and was not supposed to. But the law said open carry, kinda like jump. Well, let's jump. Say, well, not you, not you, you. Well, explain, what, what, you said jump? If, if it ain't open, you, it can't be, the word itself cannot be, uh, open. I mean, Smokey asked the question, how can it be daylight and darkness at the same time? How can it be open and not at the same time? So I ask us, uh, Madam, Madam Attorney, that there is nothing that hindereth your staff, our staff, to figure out the, um, clear measures which we can say in Leon County, this is not an open, this is not an open, we need to do something, uh, in that regard and not let silence be our best response. Silence is not a response. In a climate that is pushing open carry and a spirit that is about staying your ground and a public that is not very clear on none of this stuff, is just amping up the environment with bad things to happen.
Madam Attorney, do you want to say something?
So I can provide legal advice about where open carry would be permitted or not permitted for county property because I represent the Board of County Commissioners for Leon County. I would not opine about where it might be permitted in city facilities or state facilities or any other governmental property because I do not represent those other governmental entities. And again, as for private property, every private property owner is going to make their own individual decision. That is the blanket advice I would give to anybody who wonders if they go on somebody's private property or that they are allowed to open carry. That is very straightforward and very simple.
Well, I see some pictures up here on this screen, and I was down there at the ribbon cutting at the public library on the second floor a couple of weeks ago. And when somebody like Publix says y'all can open carry inside of Publix, I saw, uh, patrons of the library who probably don't filter as theoretically pure as you, Madam County Attorney. Folk need to know, can you open carry in the library? And if you can't, I want something wherever your jurisdiction lies of Leon County, let's state that in old county property. Can Public Works workers go to work? Well, we heard Publix say you can bring a gun down to Publix, you walk up in there and go on in there. Well, can you do that as an employee? Can you do that as a patron at the ca? And there's all kinds of folk, all kinds of diverse people in, in the public. Library, what could go wrong if you're carrying? I don't know, but I'm asking you to exercise for the interest of our board. If this board is in, we may not be interested, I may be the only person here, so it don't matter. But if there are three of us who join me, I think that our librarian and her staff should be protected. And the folk that just heard open carry meandering downtown and drifting all through, them folk need to be told something, not in here. So that's a minimal, starting with the county.
Madam Attorney, I think that's some.
She can handle. I don't want to put anything beyond your ability, but you have great ability. And I want you to exercise it, at least protect the county.
So actually, for employees, we are not preempted from how we regulate whether employees carry firearms or weapons while they're at work in the course of their employment. We have a lot of authority over that, we are not preempted by state law for that. The board has had a longstanding policy that prohibits any employee from carrying a firearm or weapon during work hours in the course of their employment. There is one exception for that, and that is statutory. An employee is allowed to have a firearm in a locked personal vehicle on county property as long as it is concealed. That is the only exception. That is the current county policy, we are allowed to have that, and that is what the county currently uses. So that's for county employees specifically. Uh, I have drafted question and answer, a document to be distributed to employees. It's currently being vetted and reviewed before it's disseminated. We've also been meeting with different divisions and offices individually to answer questions that employees have because, as you pointed out, people know that that decision came out. Of course, they're worried and concerned. Uh, and yes, library staff is one of those groups that we met with, and we had to break it to them, yes, it is now legal to open carry in a library.
Okay, so, so we don't have the authority to prohibit, or can we, uh, enunciate a policy that prohibits open carry in the library, uh, has the state of people across the street preempted our own ability to home rule and, and make a decision there?
We are preempted under Section 790.033. We have been completely prohibited and preempted, except for, for our own employees, uh, from regulating firearms or ammunition, period.
So can people come into this court, how, well, judges are here? Um, are there other areas, if you can go into the public library and open carry, are there other properties that the county have that are subject to the same openness of arms?
Um, almost all county properties and facilities are open. There are very, very few. There is currently a, a statute, it's 790.06. There's a subsection twelve in that statute that currently has a list of what we'll call sensitive areas where you cannot carry. You can't conceal carry and you cannot open carry. County commission meetings are one of them, okay, that's on the list. Jails, prisons, detention facilities are another, uh, professional athletic events, not related to firearms is another one. Schools have their own special exemptions, um...
Madam Attorney, instead of enumerating all this, Commissioner Proctor, can you perhaps get a status report or something to come back and update everybody on where you can and can't, um, carry?
I would welcome, um, I think subsection twelve you cited as, um,
I can.
For all of us to note, because, you know, Friday night, some, some high school homecoming got shot up, um, this past weekend. Um, open carry is not a friend of this community, and I'm not a legislator. Um, but this is not good, and I'm trying to understand, and though it's areas, Mr. Chairman, where we can, so not here, we, we need to do that.
Okay, um, do you want to ask for a motion or a status report or something like that?
I, I like a status report, um, delineating, uh...
Is that cool? Okay.
Where and, you know, who all qualifies to carry.
Okay.
Those things means, I'm sorry.
It's a motion, you're seconding it, Commissioner O'Keefe. Um, I think Commissioner, Commissioner Cavane?
I was just gonna ask, since we're on the topic, you mentioned schools, and, and I was gonna ask my question for the, the County Attorney. Um, Gene Cox Stadium, county owns it, leased it to the school board. They do school events there. Would that be considered open carry?
What I would say is the school board, as the lessee of that property, has to make a determination about what is and is not permissible. While the school board has ownership, uh, maintenance, ownership, well, not ownership, but control of that property, that is a question for the school board about what is permitted at the Gene Cox Stadium.
Is that not regulated by state statute that says you can't have guns on school property?
They have their own.
But we own it.
They have their own regulations.
Yeah, but it's still school property.
But we lease it to them. Yeah, that's leased property.
Guarantee you a hundred percent, you cannot have a weapon.
Yeah, I, what I'm saying is, I guess it's in the agenda item, it would be good to clarify that.
Right.
Because, you know...
I, I will obtain that information from the attorney for the school board.
Perfect.
Let them opine on that, and I will include it in the status report.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm curious also, Mr. Chairman, uh, about the fair. We had a shooting outside of the fairground, uh, about five, seven years ago, and, um, folk looking for things to do. And, um, I appreciate that coming back. We need a motion on that.
I'm sorry, you got a motion and a second, Commissioner O'Keefe's in the, uh, in the queue. Can we let him talk and then move on? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, um, and, uh, so knowing that we have a policy that, um, does not allow staff to bring firearms, uh, to county facilities, and now knowing that county facilities such as the library allow others to bring in firearms, I would, um, ask for a friendly, our employees should and have the right to a safe workplace, and so I would like, uh, information, uh, friendly amendment to bring back information for options for increasing security for our public facilities, uh, whether it's deputies or other, um, armed security so that we ensure, do everything we can to ensure the safety of our employees and our other patrons.
Very good.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, um, seeing no discussion.
And, and no one more.
Okay.
Just a question. Uh, if we wanted to add, uh, a legislative, um, item, uh, to our annual process, uh, to advocate for something about closing a loophole like this, what meeting would that be at?
Yes, it would be at your October twenty-eighth meeting, Commissioners, I think. Let me just add to this, we, obviously, the County Attorney and I have been monitoring the legislation or potential legislation or, or potential committee work on this very, very closely. I think something that, that the County Attorney was, was trying to thread the needle there is that, especially in the area of media campaigns and some of the other things, agenda items, it could inadvertently simply illuminate the very liberal interpretation of open carry, and again, inadvertently. But that's, again, what we're also trying to balance here because it is a very liberal interpretation. Um, but again, I think the County Attorney's told.
All right, Commissioner O'Keefe, you good? All right, we got a motion and a second for a status report with some specific guidance, uh, on the open carry law. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor, still with you?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say, um, you did a great meeting tonight. You've done great meetings all year long, and, um, I've, I've enjoyed another, uh, pleasurable, uh, meeting. On Friday, I wanted to share, uh, that a statue of late Dr. Frederick Humphries, uh, will be unveiled at Florida Enem University, and, um, uh, you are truly, truly, um, welcomed at eight AM on, uh, uh, seventeenth, I think that's Friday, um, it's Friday at eight AM at the university quad. Also, um, I express and send condolences to the family of Elder Terry Price Senior, who passed, uh, this past weekend, uh, the pastor of Philadelphia Presbyterian Baptist Church. Um, wonderful man, um, just, just a great, great pastor. And, um, heartfelt expressions to the members of Philadelphia Presbyterian Baptist Church. Uh, they're on day and Dunn Street, uh, what a tremendous loss. And then, uh, of course, this week marks fam use homecoming, and we say, go Rattlers, and we're looking forward to the Rattlers striking, striking, and strike again. And finally, uh, to my mother, who turns eighty-eight today. Mama, uh, I love you, I thank you for the wonderful wonders you've inspired and contributed, given to my life. Uh, you're amazing. Uh, you're amazing, and I thank you. Commissioners, I love y'all. If I've hurt anybody's feelings, um, charge it to, um, Commissioner Cummings', um, um, account, and, um, she's gonna make, make good on that. She's looking real sweet in, in, in that pink tonight, and, uh, all like that. You're the best, we're the greatest, we're the best. Even with Nick Maddox up here, we still the best of the best. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker, and happy birthday to your mother, and thank her on our behalf for the gift of you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Biner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick things. Uh, you know, for those of you who may have driven on North Monroe in the last few weeks, you've seen, um, dozens of traffic barrels on the West Hand, uh, side. That's because, um, the Florida Department of Transportation is starting the sidewalk project. Uh, that's gonna be installing sidewalk from, uh, Lake Shore down to John Knox, and the project's gonna take a while. It's going in phases, so it's gonna be starting from now until November 2026. But, uh, that project is a long time coming. Very grateful to the Florida Department of Transportation for, uh, for that project. And then also, uh, North Monroe, by the end of the year, Blueprint will be, um, installing two new landscaped medians between Allen and John Knox. So, that's, uh, gonna start before the end of the year. Just want to give a shout out to the Florida Department of Transportation and to Blueprint for all their great work on North Monroe. Uh, it really matters. And then, lastly, I want to, um, actually, I attended the Longest Table event hosted by the city of Tallahassee on, on Sunday, which is terrific. Chairman Welch was there as well. Um, really outstanding event. Um, I, I actually was there at the very first one, 10 years ago, and, um, I had a brand-new daughter that was less than a year old that I took with me, and the Tallahassee Democrat took a picture of us, um, at the table talking with, um, the city manager, Anita Favors, at the time, and, um, to actually go to the Longest Table last Sunday and have that same daughter, who's now 11, uh, go to Longest Table and sit there and talk with people that live in this community was really terrific. Uh, you know, things seem very divided now, you know? People are kind of fighting between Democrats and Republicans, and, um, a lot of division. But, but Sunday evening was much different than that. It was a great expression of this community and its ability, the, uh, the neighbors' ability to just sit down, break bread with each other, and talk with each other, and be, and make new friends. So, just want to give a big shout out to the city of Tallahassee for hosting that. Uh, 10 years ago, at the first one, they had about 500 people attend. On Sunday, they had 1,000. So, uh, kudos to the city, uh, great job, well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Biner, and I will second that. It was a great event. Uh, super cool, lots of people, very long table, and pyrotechnics, which, you know, very, very luxurious item to have at your table event. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the, uh, Tel Aviv Memorial Hospital Community Health Needs Assessment Report has been issued, and it does an incredible job laying out the status, the needs, the, the weaknesses, the strengths of our entire community's health, um, including, you know, the top three most important priorities as, as provided by respondents in Leon County is chronic disease and conditions, mental well-being, and social and economic factors affecting health. It even splits out 3204 and the unique, uh, status. And so, I ask for an agenda item to come back from staff that looks over the community health needs assessment and, uh, shares with us what we need to know about it and what the county is doing and can do to, uh, implement, um, and to address any improved way the items in the report.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. You guys cool with that? All right. Uh, Commissioner Caban?
Mr. Chair, if I may ask Commissioner O'Keefe a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner O'Keefe, what's the, the spirit of the motion? Is this just for us to come back and look at ways for the county to, how can we improve healthcare? I know there was conversation earlier related to the TMH, um, situation or TMH deal going on right now, and, um, I'm happy to support the motion if it's for education purpose, education purposes for us to look at, hey, how can we improve community healthcare? However, um, I, I want to be clear, I, I don't intend on supporting anything that interjects ourselves in the ongoing negotiations with FSU and TMH.
I'm glad you clarified that. It is nothing to do with anything even specific to TMH's operations or ownership. This is a, a study performed by TMH. It covers all information and providers. This is to be an item that provides us the results in a digestible format to guide our policies on overall community health, uh, systems and ways we support it. Purely that.
Cool. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, got it. Uh, got a motion, is there a second? Uh, Commissioner, uh, Proctor, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously, so I think it's a good motion.
Thank you. Um, the other one is, uh, is an affordable housing one. Um, we, uh, 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 two years ago, part of the Live Local Act laid out a statute, um, that allows county and municipalities to create an ordinance that, uh, provides property tax exemption to affordable housing properties that meet statutory requirements, that they must be more than 50 units, uh, they must have 20% of it being affordable units, and they, uh, must be allocating for families making less than 30% of the area median income or between 30 and 60% of the area median income. Uh, and so, this, the, the, the requirements are laid out in statute. It just requires an enacting ordinance from the municipality, um, and I will say that Shington's looking at me because he knows I'm right. I'm kidding. Um, I will say that, uh, as this came up, the county, um, has noted that this ordinance is not necessary for every proposal we've had so far, that we have ways that these qualify, but I'm gonna be asking for this because there's no harm in having every tool in the toolbox, uh, should another proposal come up in the future that fits this. And so, I am, uh, making, I'm, I move to have an agenda item come back, uh, to propose an ordinance enacting the property tax exemption for affordable rental properties related to Florida Statute 196 dot 1979.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Shington, do you want to speak on that at all? You're good? Okay, just an enacting clause? You're good? We're good. They're good. So, I'm cool with agenda items. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Uh, Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a couple of, of things. I'd like to propose a pro proclamation recognizing Nick Stargary, which is directly across the street from the Augustus G. Atkins Courthouse, who are celebrating 75 years of providing services to, uh, to this community.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for proclamation. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, earlier, uh, tonight, um, one of the public speakers, Mr. Dellinger Hollinger, raised the issue about a memorial site, um, at Capital City Country Club location for the graves of 150 to 100, uh, slaves. And he pointed out, uh, certain statutes, uh, Madam Attorney, that indicated where the county could act or could intervene in instances where, um, the city failed to intervene or municipalities failed to intervene. Uh, I would like to just move for an agenda item to come back specifically on that issue as it relates to Capital City Country Club, and we know there's, um, uh, has been allegations in the paper, rumors about perhaps selling, uh, the city selling the property to Capital City Country Club, and of course, Mr. Hollinger indicated that there have been appeals before the city to preserve or designate certain areas within, uh, the golf course, and there has been no action from the city. So, I'd like to see what authority, uh, I'd ask for an agenda item to come back to address what authority, uh, the county would have in that particular instance, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Commissioner Caban?
Commissioner Cummings, is this a, uh, a status report to look at, like an update, or is this looking for an actionable, an actionable report, or an actionable item that would look at the county? I guess we, I'm unfamiliar with the, the statute, by the way, um, so is this...
Yeah, it's not an update, because I don't think it's been before us before, but it was raised by one of, one of the speakers. So, I would like to get some background information about Capital City Country Club ownership, what authority the county has in instances where a municipality, according to Mr. Hollinger, has failed to act to protect that particular, uh, portion of the country club that has been designated, um, as a grave site for 80 to 200 slave graves.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I watched the city commission meeting, I think it was the last meeting where this particular item came up, because I know that this was an important issue, uh, in our community. And from my understanding, I believe every single commissioner up there basically stated that they intend on preserving, um, the grave site as part, and, and wanted, from my understanding, they want to make it part of the transaction. And so, Mr. County Administrator, would this, if, if we, I mean, uh, I, I would like, I would like this, uh, help, you know, support Commissioner Cummings' initiative, but I don't want to obviously interject ourselves in their transaction. I think this is an agenda item that's coming short, I mean, in the next meeting or two with the city. Um, so, what, what's, what's the feedback as far as, like, what jurisdiction do we have there?
Yes, I was just listening closely to, um, Commissioner Cummings' motion and, and the reference to the statutes, which too, I, I would obviously defer to the county attorney on. But again, at a high level, we could bring back a status report of what the city is considering, what they're doing, and provide that information to you, then Chastity could help on the, on the statute.
And, and it's, it's, I guess it's my intention that all of that would be part of the agenda item that's coming back. I'm not proposing that the county does any interjection in any city proceeding at this time, but at least know where, where we are, what our authority is under the statute.
Gotcha, that, that was my clarification.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Cummings, I, I'm with Commissioner Caban on that. I, I'll welcome the agenda item back, but I don't want to poke the bear no more at the city.
No, absolutely not.
Uh, Commissioner...
But just responding to Mr. Hollinger, he can't tell us what the concern...
Yeah, I don't know what statute he's talking about either, so I'd be interested to hear that, too.
Right, and he would educate us all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Proctor, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, sir. Ms. Joe, thank you very much. County attorney, when the item comes back, I think Hollinger, Mr. Hollinger referenced a Florida statute 497 point 284, and he suggested that it singularly, uh, grants the county an authority to, um, in, intervene if in six months' time, uh, particular standards of care have not, um, been, um, adhered to, uh, by, um, whoever owns the cemetery. And, um, and I may, um, be a little foggy about this, but, um, somehow or the other, I thought that counties do have authority, uh, some authority over cemeteries, uh, some, some relationship to the functions of, uh, some cemeteries. And I would definitely appreciate, um, in addition to, if, uh, what Commissioner Cummings is suggesting, that we augment and highlight the county's authority and, uh, potential to intervene if, in fact, um, if Mr. Calvin Jones is right, 150 to 200, uh, persons are buried there, or if the, um, Fed's assessment of 40 to 100 persons are, um, are buried there. Um, exactly how do you, uh, give away a graveyard, uh, uh, pass it along, and do you need a referendum, uh, I mean, these things? Uh, the authority, the care, uh, and, and are dead people owed any kind of, um, um, care, allegiance, um, that kind of thing? What, what, what do you owe dead people, uh, in particular if they're under the ownership of, uh, of this, of the city municipal government or the country club?
So, so there, there's actually a, a structure for, uh, regulation of cemeteries at the state level. The Department of Financial Services Division of Funerals, Cemetery and Consumer Services has some regulatory authority, but, uh, local jurisdictions do in some instances as well. So, we would definitely provide that information in the agenda item to come back. That's the Board's direction.
Very good.
All right, Commissioner Maddox, you're in the queue.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh, so, should I figure out how to say it?
Oh, uh, uh, he was commenting on your, uh...
Oh, commenting, oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. On your item.
I, I am not gonna support the item. Here's why. Um, Madam Attorney, let me ask some questions.
Sure.
Madam Attorney, um, is the city asset correct?
It's my understanding it's sitting on property. I will, full disclosure, I have not looked into any of this stuff. This is the first time it's been raised at the meeting.
And, and so, what I'm beginning to see here is it's a bit of a trend. Uh, people go across the street to the city, they don't get the answer they want.
Right.
And then they come over here to the county, y'all gotta do something, but it's city business. So, I can it to, right now, we are working on an agreement with the, um, with the Florida, uh, with the Fair Association, North Florida Fair Association, uh, as to how we're going to work through the members on the board and other things that we want to consider before we invest the blueprint money into it. Uh, that is a county fairground, fairground function, um, and we will have jurisdiction over how that goes. And if we don't handle, handle it the way the general public wants us to handle it, uh, fairgrounds in the city, they go across the street.
Right.
County didn't do what they're supposed to do, then city comes over here and try to tell us how to handle our property. Um, so, I, I, I get where Mr. Hollinger's coming from. I just, I don't like this thing of, you're not getting what you want from the city, so all of a sudden now you come to us and we're supposed to make them do it, um, and, and over something that we really don't have. So, the question is, what jurisdiction do we have? What can we do? Uh, I would say we probably can't do anything, but I, I want the city to handle their piece of the business. If there's an issue that's pertaining to me, that I find that I, I want to jump into the city on, I, I almost think I'm gonna go across the street myself and speak as a private citizen and tell them how I feel about it. I just, we've all seen it. I mean, it's just like, over the past year and a half, every time something happens over there, if folks don't like, they come to us. Yes, I know we are elected, I'm elected countywide, um, you guys are, are elected within your districts, but they include, uh, city residents as well, but there are certain things that the city has jurisdiction over that we don't. This issue is one of those issues where the city is working out a deal on selling that piece of property. Now, Commissioner Caban brings up a good point of, well, he watched the meeting, let's, let's wait and see, because the city has said that they're going to, uh, reserve, preserve that site and try to honor it. So, at their level worse, I think this may be premature in the sense that, what if the city goes, goes ahead and does try to preserve the site? Um, so, even from the standpoint, if I did want to jump over there and say, what can we do, uh, I would still say, can we at least wait until we see if they're gonna preserve the site before we try to see what we can do? I just, and, and understand, this is a very important issue for me, too. Uh, those grave sites do deserve to be preserved. I've always been one to try to respect jurisdiction, though, because there's times before some of you on the board where, where the city were trying to get into our business, and we would, we would, we would feel some type of way about that, because it's our business. And I've always tried to make it a point, again, to try to stay on my side of the tracks, and they stay on their side of the tracks, and when we have to have conversations, we have conversations together, work through it amicably as much as we can. And so, it's a long, a long way of me saying, I, I can't support the motion. I am interested in, in, in the, in the issue. I would have almost rather, you know, get information sent to us through email that tells us individually what we can do, and then if somebody wants to bring it up, they can, rather than come back with an agenda item that's almost saying, if the, if you can't get done what you want to get done at the city, then we have this thing that we can do that would prevent the city from being able to do what they are trying to do. When that, I mean, I think we're both trying to do the best job we can as respective governments and respecting, uh, and, and representing our constituents. So, Mr. Chair, I don't think it'll take a long time, but I just, it's bigger, it's bigger than this one agenda item. It's becoming a trend throughout all things that citizens don't like that's going on in the city. We're not consolidated government. We're not consolidated government. We are the county government. That is the city government. There are certain things we do have jurisdiction over, but for the most part, they, they, they run their own government. So, I, I can't support the motion on the floor. Do I do, I do... Though I do appreciate and understand the spirit behind it. I just think, for one, it's premature, and, two, I would really like to get to a point where we really let the city do their business and we do ours. And when we need to step in, we step in because we have jurisdiction to. We're not looking for places to have jurisdiction to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Then Commissioner Cummings, again, then Proctor, then Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you restate the motion?
Yes, I asked for an agenda item to come back from our county attorney, county administrator, to look at the statute that provides what authority the county has to intervene in an instance when another municipality has the authority and they fail to intervene. My motion in no way suggests that we send anything to the city that we intervene in anything that the city is doing. I think it's incumbent upon us, and certainly incumbent upon me, to just know the extent of authority that the board has. Mr. Hollinger raised that with us, he pointed out certain statutes that I'm not familiar with, and I think it's education for all of us. I think we are presuming, I think we've got a presumption out there, that we, as a county, is going to intervene in city action. I'm not proposing that, I'm not suggesting that we intervene in any city action, but I think it's important to me to know if the statute has some criteria for county action that we know it. And we might not act upon it in this instance, but at least we are aware of what authority that we have, Mr. Chair. So that's basically my clarification in the request, Commissioner O'Keefe, that I'm asking for the agenda item to come back on that.
Thank you. And so, I am in agreement with a lot of what Commissioner Maddox has said. And this is, this is, this particular site is in my district, and even if it wasn't, it would still be important to me and everyone in this community. I intended, after Mr. Hollinger's information, I was not aware that there was a statute that possibly gave counties authority to preserve abandoned cemeteries and grave sites. And so, I actually had this similar thought to Commissioner Maddox. Following this meeting, I would look at it myself, read it, get comfortable if it was a path I understood is viable, and come back at another meeting to bring it forward. But since it's been brought up, it's sort of worth going ahead and getting the item to find from the county attorney, is this anything we have any authority over? And so, my interest in supporting it is not anything to do with who owns it, not anything to do with owns it now, or who owns it in the future, not anything to do with any deals or transfers that are between the city and someone else. I have my opinions, but on those things, that's not our jurisdiction here. The thing I would, the thing I'm curious about and want to know is, is preserving abandoned grave sites throughout the county, part of our jurisdiction. That's informational, and it does not rely on who owns what. And so, my intention in supporting this is totally independent of whatever happens regarding any deals or anything. It's when we find abandoned grave sites, how can we intercede if they are not being preserved correctly? By the time we find out, it may be preserved and honored correctly. And I doubt, unfortunately, I doubt that this site, as we go through the rest of our county and more research is done, I doubt this will be the only site we find this. And it would be good for me to know what our role might be, or not a role might be. I want to echo also, Commissioner Maddox, in that it is becoming, it feels like it's becoming a thing where if you don't get what you want at the city, you come here. Where we have authority, where it is in our capacity, I'm happy to and support going through it. But ultimately, things that are controlled by another entity, the citizens vote for those people, and if they don't like what they're getting over there, that's what our elections are for. And so, I support this because I was basically going to research it and bring it back next meeting, but I really don't want us to get involved in transactions of another entity. I just want to find out if we, what our role is in preserving history. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Minor, then back to Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner Maddox brought interesting points up, and I think that he hit a note of which previously, that he said that people come down here when they can't get nothing done. And that's exactly what Mr. Hollinger said, that since 2020 or 2021, the city agreed and promised to do something to provide a marker. But that key critical word, nothing has been done. And you will find deficiencies of Leon County's government, people all the time coming to us, because people come where they think there's empathy, or sympathy, or understanding of their plight, their issue, their problem. And that's why my office gets more than a fair share of District One calls, which ought go to the city. But Rachael will tell you, they're going to call you, and they call Bill Proctor because there's something very important, they're interested in the word done. And Delatory Hollinger came here today after four years of waiting on the city. And I guess what revved up his angst is the notion that the property is about to be transferred to an owner, potentially, a private owner, potentially, of which the city has not done anything. And whether or not in that void, can we casually drop golf balls on the faces of African-Americans? Now, I don't recall ever seeing someone who was a Micasuki Indian, but today, someone from the Micasuki Indian community came here and thanked us for a proclamation. But I've known lots of people that have come from the slave community. My own family come from the slave community. I ain't got to talk about Micasuki Indians because I never seen one, but I done seen lots of slaves and the, and I'm an offspring of slaves. So if someone came and said that there were, two different archaeologists said that there were forty to a hundred, and then another said a hundred and fifty to two hundred white people buried under J. Gator Park Golf Course, there'd probably be a different take as to whether or not we ought to be dropping golf balls on the faces of dead white people at J. Gator Park Golf Course. You'd hear it differently. You'd feel it differently. You see, empathy is always a basis why people call on you, and it's a compliment to us that people, when they don't get nothing done at the city, they come to where they know we care, we react. And so, as long as we pay taxes, city taxes, and county taxes, you ought to be able to go, you're putting your money in them, stand up and do something. Do it, done it, did it. That right there should always be an open door, and as long as I pay taxes to the city, I don't care what it look like. If something ain't get done at the county, I'm going to go ask the city, and vice versa. So it goes back to that right there. It's the response that man and people pay to both governments. City want to charge you twenty-two percent extra for file services. We said no, but both governments collaborate. But I think that what we dealt with tonight, what Mr. Hollinger was seeking, is the qualitative response to an issue which, you know, is an old American favorite, race, and the discarding of people who were discarded even while they live, they were discarded. They were not whole people when they live. They was not citizens when they live, and they are even less so dead. So whether you have the empathy to understand this peculiar dynamic of American history and evolution, it comes back to, he perceived that we would be empathetic to this very important issue. And as a black person, father, grandfather, son, and many other things, I'm keenly interested, and I'm deeply hurt. I've not said anything about those dead black people out there, you know, getting golfed over sport, golf carts rolling over them, hee hee, ha ha. I mean, that hurts. And if that's all, they were nobody living, and they ain't nobody dead, that's a reason to pause. But I'm not a city commissioner, and try to stay in my lane. But do I hurt, and do I share what Mr. Hollinger was asking of us, that somebody care and give a good goddamn about these dead Africans who represent me, who served before me, and but for the grace of God, could have been me? So, Commissioner Maddox, that's what is at stake. And as long as that man pay taxes to the city and the county, he ought to be able to go anywhere he want to for a result and to get something done.
All right, Madam Attorney, do you have some thoughts?
I mean, I can bring back a status report if that's what the board wants. I can send it by email. I will tell you that, looking at the statute on its face, it's fairly clear what we can and can't do. So I can just tell you now, if you'd like, or, again, I can put it in the status report, or I can email it to everybody, whatever your pleasure is. But the statute says, a county or municipality which has within its jurisdiction an abandoned cemetery, or a cemetery that has not been reasonably maintained for a period in excess of six months, may, upon notice to the department, which in this case, is going to be Department of Financial Services, take such action as is necessary and appropriate to provide for the maintenance and security of the cemetery. Okay? So that's just the first part of it. But what I'm going to tell you is, pretty sure that property is within the jurisdiction of the city, not the county. So that's issue number one. Two, I don't know whether it's been maintained or not. Mr. Hollinger was talking about the fact that they committed to put a marker there. That's not the same thing as whether it's been maintained. Okay? That's not necessarily the same thing. And then, what jurisdiction you would have, assuming it's in your jurisdiction and it hasn't been maintained, is just to maintain and secure the cemetery. That is not the same thing as putting a marker there. That would be beyond the scope of what we would be authorized to do under that statute. You would be saying, we're going to maintain and secure the cemetery. That's it, if that isn't being done. That's basically what this statute would allow the county to do, but I don't even think it's in the county's jurisdiction to begin with. I think that's problematic. It's in the city's jurisdiction, aside from the fact that it's literally on city property.
On point. Mr. Chair.
Can you go right after Commissioner Minor? Can he go first?
Of course.
Commissioner Minor, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, it's all right. I think Commissioner Maddox might have something.
Yeah, when I went down and talked to the county attorney and the county administrator, Commissioner Cummings, what I said to them, what I said to them both is just that. If we could get an email of her analysis of the statute, and then if there's something in there that we want to bring back as an agenda item, then I would much prefer us do that, even if we had to make a motion for that. And here's why. When we are bringing agenda items to the table, I want it to be actionable items that we know that we can do something. If we're just asking for information about what we can do, and they can give it to us via, you know, analysis, just like she just kind of read off, I would almost rather have it come to us and for us to be able to read through, look at, get her analysis in it, and then we can bring it back. So I would almost prefer, but it's your agenda item, Commissioner Cummings, that if we could have it, staff send us communication about it, all of us, and then, once we get that communication, and we see we can actually do something, then we bring that back based off the communication as for the agenda item. I would prefer it that way, but again, it's your item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Would that need a motion, Madam Attorney? If we did a email per se from staff?
Usually, that's the guy, usually, the commission lets us know whether they want it in a formal, agenda item status report, or just disseminated by email. That's usually.
So I would ask, I guess what I'm asking Commissioner Cummings is, if you would amend your motion to be an email from staff, email communication from staff specifying exactly what you asked for, to be sent to us for our consideration, to be maybe brought back at the next meeting, that would be my friendly amendment that I would ask, if you consider.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I speak? So the email communication to be brought back at the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
The email communication will come to us as soon as possible. If we read the email, we see that there's something that we can do within it, then we will come back at the next meeting and ask for the agenda item that specifies exactly what we could do, given our powers here at the county, what we could do about the item.
Okay, I see. And I don't have a major problem with that, Mr. Chair. My initial motion was essentially that, you know, what authority do we have? And in doing the analysis, and I recognize the county attorney read the statute, but I know she always goes further, and she looks for case law, because there might be some specific instance where judges have scrutinized the factual situation perhaps that has been raised with us. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it coming to us as email. I can amend my motion, or you do a substitute motion, I can amend the motion.
No, I won't substitute it. I will second your amended motion, because I think Commissioner Proctor stepped out.
Oh, okay.
I will second your amended motion.
Okay, I can amend.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can wrap this up. And I'm glad you two were able to kind of talk about that stuff, because, and the friendly amendment has been accepted, because I think that's the right direction to go, and I'm going to support the motion. If I could make one more suggestion, in addition to the motion, as you described, having an email come back to us, would you also accept a friendly amendment to add a couple of paragraphs to address Commissioner O'Keefe's important point, which is to take a look at this in a general way, too? If the county attorney could just give us a paragraph or two of how the county, or just the citizenry in general, could go to, I think the Department of State has a gravesite registry, how we could go in, if we have a gravesite in our districts, for example, we're not sure if it's completely abandoned, or if it's actually been designated in the registry, how can we go back and check? And what do we do if it's not registered? Just a couple paragraphs on that would be very helpful. And I think it also addresses Commissioner Maddox's earlier point, which is that, let's not just always think about what we can do to the city. I mean, this is a way to kind of generalize this motion and have this be pertaining to grave sites in general. And Commissioner Cummings, I know you weren't looking at it from that perspective. It's not about what the city needs to do, it's about what we needed to protect the people that are buried there, right? I totally understand that. But would you be willing to accept that friendly amendment to add a paragraph or two of general approach on grave sites in general?
Absolutely. And, Mr. Chair, I would accept that friendly amendment. And just for clarification, my initial motion was never about what we could do to the city, what we have authority to do to the city as it relates to the gravesite.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Cummings, that was misstated. I didn't mean to imply that. It was not your intent whatsoever, is rather to protect the heritage of the folks who were laid to rest there. So I totally understand. But, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'll support the motion.
All right, Commissioner Cummings, we have a motion and a second for some information to come back to us via email about what we can and can't do regarding cemeteries in various jurisdictions in the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Commissioner Cummings, still with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to just recognize October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We all have on our pink. And just give encouragement to those among us who, individuals and families, who are struggling with experiences from the effects of this devastating disease. And also... devastating disease. And also just, I guess, remember and commemorate those who, who are no longer with us, who, who, who suffered from, from that disease. And that includes my mom, who is no longer, no longer with us as well. Mr. Chair, as the representative from this body on the Children's Services Council, one of the quality of life initiatives that we adopted was to partner with the Children's Services Council for collaboration, programming different things as it relates to our children and our families. And I want to just commend the county and our county administrator for allowing us to utilize the county-owned facility down at, at Fort Braden. We have two family resource centers now, one at Cross Creek and one at Fort Braden. And they are, they are really game changers for our families and for our children in those areas. But I also want to just ask the county administrator and the county to be supportive and open-minded because we are working on trying to place another family resource center in Springfield, Frenchtown, in, in that, in that particular area, Griffin Heights, Griffin Heights area. And I'm not sure if the county has facilities in that area or not, Mr. County Administrator, but just asking for the support as much as we can from the county. Hopefully, within the next two months, maybe sometime next year, we'll be able to open up a brick and mortar family resource center in those areas. And we had a lease assessment done before we could expend any of the taxpayer money from, under the Children's Service Council ordinance. And that, that study indicated that the Springfield, Griffin Heights, Frenchtown area is one of, one of the areas in most need of utilization of funds from the Children's Services Council. So we are going to try to, try to, try to make that happen, make it come to fruition. So thank you very much for that. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate my fellow Commissioner Christian Caban for being inducted into Tallahassee State College Hall of Fame. So I think that a round of applause is in order. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First things first, Miss Juneteenth Florida USA is Corinne Hobbs. Corinne Hobbs is a local youth, was crowned Miss Juneteenth USA. Her perform, her platform is literary, literacy and food insecurity. I want to highlight her stellar representation for our community and positive image for our youth with a proclamation.
You got it. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Secondly, last year, I think you had the honor of doing this. This year I do. The Fairview Falcons were Division One football champions, and my daughter Miley is a cheerleader on that team, and I was not going to pass up the opportunity
Come on.
to, to ask for them to get a proclamation. They got a heck of a team, good coaches.
Tough squad, buddy. They beat the drums off the mountain middle.
We'll move. Our second.
I'll make that motion.
All right. We got a motion and a second to recognize Fairview's district title for football. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Finally, Mr. Chair, I want to give staff some credit and a shout out to staff for what they did in Micasuki. Those folks were very pleased. That event went really well. Mr. Chair, you would have been proud. You represented well out there. You know, we had some folks come here and feel like they weren't appreciated, but we, the county, this board, did another event. I think everybody left happy. And so I wanted to let staff know that we definitely appreciate what they did out there and the effort they put into it. It was not lost upon us. How much effort it took to get that done, even down to the signage of the Boys and Girls Club being changed or put up correctly. Everything we asked for, staff did. So Matt, your team, you did a great job. We appreciate you, Mr. Administrator. We appreciate you for, for being patient with us and getting that done for us. So, Mr. Chair, that's, that's all. Commissioner Proctor did come out and preach the whole sermon. He even sang him out there. It was ridiculous.
He's a preacher.
Yeah.
I hate I missed it, man.
Yeah. No, you, no, you don't. No, you don't.
No, really, genuinely, it was on my calendar, and I completely and utterly, my Saturday happened, and I, like, was shocked.
You missed the event. I'm, I'm sure you didn't hate missing Commissioner Proctor.
No, man.
Lead and him. That's the part I was talking about.
I feel like we watch Commissioner Proctor preach once a month on Second Tuesday.
Ah, and so I made, I made a, a friendly wager of, of a few pushups with the second greatest aide in America, Chauncey Haynes. He said we'd be out here by seven fifteen. I said six forty-five. It is now eight fifteen. So we both lose. So we owe each other pushups. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Couple pushups is all I can do. So, you know. Mr. Vice Chair? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings, you're in the...
I have one more item. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think Commissioner Vice Chair let you roll it out. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just have one more item on my list. I apologize. Over the last couple of months, there, there have been, maybe the last year, several deaths at the jail. I'm not sure if we have any exposure, Madam Attorney, or not, if we have gotten any liability letters or, or anything. Do we normally, have we normally been, received any exposure from any of the jail deaths? Madam Attorney, you...
I, I don't believe that we've had any notices of claim filed on that issue. I, I don't think so. I haven't specifically noticed any. But I could send an email update to the board letting you know, if you'd like, just for informational purposes.
Okay. I, I think that would be great. Mr. Chair, I, I don't necessarily want an agenda item to come back, but I would, I'm just wondering if we have any, any exposure. Apparently, the deaths have different causes of death, and, and I'm not sure if the sheriff, he's not obligated to do, make a report to us about that, right, Mr. County Administrator, or what?
Not necessarily. Certainly, I know his style is one where he's certainly willing to discuss it. I will tell you, the detention center is, is a very complex operation, and it's one where there's, that vulnerability is assessed continuously, and we continuously make changes to include very significant budget appropriations made by this body to address some of the vulnerabilities. And it's part of their accreditation. It's part of a continuous review of things that we do, again, to limit and to mitigate to the greatest extent possible any untimely...
And that's ongoing, I'm sure.
An ongoing thing. It's a high priority.
Okay.
And again, very extensive budgeting appropriated by the board to address some of those issues.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. So you...
I would also just say that as of several years ago, we, the county, I guess, took back responsibility for certain maintenance responsibilities, but, but the sheriff, and we have an, an agreement in place to govern that, but in terms of the operations of the facility, that is squarely within the jurisdiction of the sheriff.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Caban, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I will be brief. I have two proclam, two proclamations. You may recall in a previous meeting, I requested a proclamation for Pine View and Sable Palm. I would like to amend that proclamation to add Rutger Elementary School will also receive an, an A grade and do them all at the same time. So that's my motion.
Second. All right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers.
Thank you. The next one is our Fort Braden pioneers. Their, their volleyball team won the county championship, and I would like to request a proclamation to honor them.
All right. We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cummings, for the Fort Braden pioneers volleyball championship. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers.
Next, I just have a few, handful of big shout outs and thank yous. I would like to thank the Florida Highway Patrol for their partnership in doing a, you know, they did a traffic operation on Highway 20. They increased presence with a lot of, you know, the accidents and speeding that we've had out there, and we've had great feedback. Additionally, the sheriff also recently had an operation out there. They sent us the numbers earlier today. And so, you know, the last, the last few weeks and last few months, our office has really been trying to work with law enforcement to increase presence on Highway 20, and we're very pleased in their partnership and ongoing efforts. Next, you know, I love to give, I love to give our shout out to Public Works. Brent Pell, your team does an amazing job. I, I want to say one thing, guys. The, the work they're doing on Oak Ridge Road is incredible. They're, they're out there all the time. We've had compliments from our neighbors out there just how quick they're really working. And something I saw with my own eyes, I wanted to share with the board. I was down Spring Hill Road. It was a Wednesday evening. Alex and I were just looking at a piece of land out there. Seven o'clock at night, I did a U-turn, and there was a, a handful of our Public Works crews still working off on a, on a, on a side road. And so Brent, you know, we love to see those guys working late, and we appreciate it sincerely. Next, Florida Department of Transportation is continuing to invest in Highway 20 and, in District Two initiatives, and we could not be more thankful. Recently had a meeting with Secretary Tim Smith, and who's the new secretary for FDOT in our region, and they have committed to funding six turning lanes on Highway 20 in result of our traffic study that we had, you know, back in 2023. These are six intersections that were deemed dangerous intersections with high volume of accidents, and they are going to implement the six turning lanes as part of a resurfacing project within the next two fiscal years. And additionally, Mr. Administrator, thank you for the collaboration between county staff, Talke Electric Co-op, and FDOT in implementing, in the process of implementing a string of lights on electric poles in the Silver Lake corridor, which is another part of Highway 20 that has, that in our safety study said needed additional lighting. And so, you know, we're thrilled and we're thankful for all the, the partnerships across different governmental agencies to help, you know, deliver wins for our constituency. So very much thanks and appreciative. Last, want to give our, our chairman, this is our, his last meeting, formal meeting as a chairman. And, you know, it's, it's been a great year, and I think you have represented us very well, Commissioner Welch. So I, I it's been an honor to be your vice chairman and looking forward to where we have our legislative workshop. And I think that's it.
Yeah, man. Thank you.
So, all right, Commissioners, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It's been a pleasure and looking forward to my last opening of a meeting in November. It's been certainly a great experience, obviously. And I'll have more to say about that in November. I just have a few proclamations. I was asked to request a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, which I think is in November. So I'd like to, okay, I think, yeah, can you make the motion? Thank you. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. That's Hispanic Heritage Month. Also like to request a proclamation recognizing Pisgah Methodist Church out there off Centerville Road for their upcoming 200th anniversary, and their opening of their new fellowship hall. Pisgah Methodist Church is one of our oldest churches, created post-Civil War, 1859, and their previous building was built in 1859. So they created, they built a new fellowship hall. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pisgah Methodist Church. It's off, it's off Pisgah Church Road out there in, off Centerville. It's a beautiful church, really, truly. Beautiful, old, old church. And I'll be going to their, their ceremony. I think it's first week of November, first Sunday in November, to dedicate their new building. And I'll be taking that proclamation. So thank you. And request a proclamation for Chief Master Sergeant Charles La Croix for his service to be presented at Operation Thank You coming up on Veterans Day at the American Legion Hall.
Move.
All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, second from Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. And one more, proclamation for Timothy Griffith for his service also to be presented at Operation Thank You. Moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. And lastly, I also want to shout out the vice chair for his induction into the TSC Hall of Fame, where he joins me, a couple of fellow proud Eagles from TSC. I, I had the privilege of being at his induction ceremony, which was awesome, a well-deserved honor. And I know we're all proud of Tallahassee State College and all it does for our community. And, and, you know, it's, it's a pretty, pretty impressive Hall of Fame at TSC, actually. You go look at that wall, and you're like, man, it's a lot of very influential people in our community have come through TSC. And, and so always cool to, to be there and to see Commissioner Caban get recognized. So that is basically all I've got. Just want to give a shout out to our county administrator and our county attorney and all our staff for, for sticking with us into the evening. We, we appreciate you guys more than you know. Thank you all so much, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. We are adjourned. George Plimpton on the other side of the street. And he's just, because George Plimpton's like 6'4", very distinguished, preppy kind of guy, dressed in, dude, he says, George, George Plimpton. He hadn't seen...